First order of business is public comment. If you have a public comment, or if you have a comment, come to the podium and state your name and address, address your comments to the board and not to the audience, and you have three minutes.
We're in agreement.
No?
Nobody's talking.
All right, item number three, public hearing, New Hampshire Municipal Aid Fund, anticipated revenue. So I declare the public hearing open. May anybody like to speak to this?
So you may recall that as part of its biennial budget process, the state voted to grant municipalities additional municipal aid over the course of the two years. So the amount that we received the other day, forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and two cents, was the portion for fiscal year twenty. So we are accepting this as unanticipated revenue under RSA 3195B. The funds are unrestricted, meaning we can use the funds for any purpose that towns illegally able to sky money on. That also includes using some or all of the funds to reduce the 2019 tax rate. If the board chooses to use some or all for any particular purpose, the funds do not lapse. In other words, they sit there until they are spent. So one of the things that we have discussed at previous meetings was possibly using the funds for the clay lane gravel pit. In January of this year, the select board voted to allow the public works manager to move ahead with the planning for that project, and so that is ongoing.
Ms. Rossi?
I just want to address a few items that I read on Facebook about this project. First of all, as you probably all recall, where we got, we got this property back in the late eighties.
Nineteen eighty-five.
And it abutted the chiny gravel pit. The chiny gravel pit was recently developed. The proximity to the houses isn't any different, this pit, than the chiny gravel pit, so it's not going to, in my opinion, it's not going to affect property values. It's the same proximity as a chiny gravel pit. We actually are working with the developers, timber builders of the chiny gravel pit, to make their open space better by this development. The chiny gravel pit base is here, and our pit is like this. So at the end of it, if we work together, there's an agreement we can make up so that there's no, there's no buffer. So our, bottom of our area will be level with bottom of their area, so it'll make their open space actually nicer, because right now it's like this. We're only planning on about three of the seven acres. So right now, the plan is to just cut two to three acres, plus the roadway in, which is in the farthest back corner of the property, away from all of the opposing abutters. The direct abutter that it abuts is in favor of this, and she was, you know, the land came from her family back in the eighties. So there's really no further, the property values were the same when the people bought their property abutted a gravel pit. Now, we're working with Chinburg to, like I said, to make sure that the pit levels are the same. And the house in that development, that is the closest to the gravel pit, actually the only one that abuts our property, we met with the guy buying the property long before he bought it, walked it with him, showed him the areas we were cutting, showed him the buffer areas and everything, and he was totally fine with it. He actually went through, bought the lot, and he's going to be moving in sometime soon. As far as, as an employee goes, it's a lot easier just to say, "We're not going to do it, we'll just buy the sand," but that's not in the best interest of the town. Unfortunately, that's our job, making hard decisions. You don't always make a lot of friends, but it's the best thing for the town. It's a savings of over a million dollars. And it's a twenty to twenty-five year process, it's not going to happen overnight. That's about it, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Major questions, but the estimates now was, it's not twenty-five thousand anymore, is it?
It's just under twenty thousand for the engineering portion. Mr. Bullock has been working to get quotes and some price estimates for the rest of the work, in other words, the tree cuttings, the stumping, the clearing, and whatever else needs to be done, so he may be able to speak to that.
We walked out there with a logger, but it's not a heavy, it's not, it's basically in wood terms, it's junk wood, so there's no value for us. It's, you know, and we, we are not exempt from the reclamation planning process, so the town, even though it's in allowed use for the town, we still have to go through the planning board process. We have to do a reclamation plan, which is what the funds are for, and have to have a public hearing through the planning board to address abutters concern and things like that. So we'll have a sidewalk and things like that as far as, as part of the, we originally thought we were exempt from everything, but we found out we were not. We do have to do a reclamation plan, go through the planning board process and things like that.
Actually, I support the idea, and we had talked before too, wasn't there something else we're considering spending the money with?
We had also talked about possibly utilizing some of the funds, or if there were funds remaining, to expand the parking and lumber departure. Those, I believe, were the two things that we can talk to.
Okay. Questions?
No.
But the funds, because they're not lapsing, so if the board decides to move forward in spending it to, to, use the word, create gravel pit, you could use the funds for the ongoing or the beginning operations of the gravel pit, again, because the funds still lapse.
I saw the sample motion, can we just move at this evening to just accept the money?
Yes.
And then determine later what we want to do with it?
Yep.
Sure.
Envoy them.
Can I ask if we would like to get going on this project, if we can, because it's my understanding, and Mr. Bullock can speak, we only have sand left for this year, and it's not budgeted to buy, and we're requested not to increase our budgets for this year, so time's a ticking. And to do the work, field work, it's nice to have it done before snow comes.
Yeah, we might want to remind the board and the people who are here that there is no, and again, Mr. Bullock can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that there is any money in the highway budget for sand for winter operations, that the sand that we have been using is sand that we stockpiled from the Old Mill Road car project. So if we were to have to put funds into fiscal twenty-one for sand, it would be an increase to the budget.
Mr. Bullock?
Yeah, so all the sand right now, we got from Old Mill, so it's free, and was free. The budget that I have, the line item that I have now says salt, sand, magnesium. We haven't bought sand with that budget line in years, it's all been salt.
Two thousand nine?
Yeah, two thousand nine was the last year we even thought about buying sand, but it's all been salt. And last year, we spent almost all of it on salt. I called today to get new numbers, so if I have to buy sand, barox is fourteen dollars a ton for winter sand. I need about fourteen hundred tons of sand.
That's not including trucking?
And that's not including trucking. Trucking is a hundred and five dollars per delivery, and it's probably, so if it's triaxles, it's a hundred loads, so that's about ten thousand dollars. If it's trailer dumps versus tractor trailers, it's probably a little over fifty loads, so you'll only have five grand, so the total increase could be anywhere between thirty and twenty-five or twenty-four thousand dollars just in sand for FY twenty-one, which I didn't include because we've been working toward this end goal of getting sand out of it. And there's where we're at.
Questions?
So the question is, is, I don't mind you accepting it, just accept it, and is there a second motion?
Oh, no, I was just thinking in terms of splitting this.
Yeah, just split it.
My, my issue with using it for the gravel pit, sand pit, or whatever you want to call it, is I'd rather have the voters vote on it, give them a say in terms of this, because it seems to be a kind of a controversial issue. That would be my hesitation.
I'm not enthusiastic about that.
Okay.
I'd rather go forward.
We do have limitation amount of sand that's available to us, and this, how much sand is available in that, do you have a vision?
Twenty to twenty-five years worth.
So the estimate, if, the estimate for if we did the entire, there's five acres of really good material, there's a hundred and twenty-one thousand cubic yards of material in the ground that we could use. We only want to go after three acres of it, so there's still about eighty thousand cubic yards. We use about a thousand yards per year of sand, which comes up to fourteen hundred ton after you do a weigh.
We're, we're only taking a segment of the land and leaving the rest of the, I mean, if we want to just call it for treadles and so on. So I talked to one of the elder sub-lickmen today, who was involved in the...
I was talking about you.
And, you know, I'm talking about...
Elder past, like...
Oh, past, past.
Who was involved, who was involved in this, in this purchase, et cetera. And they recognized right away the value of this, and the value of them for buying it, was the sand and gravel that they would need in the future. It was part of the plan. And I think, I honestly, I, I think we have to go forward with it. We're looking at a lot of money, a lot of money that we would have to expend if we didn't, and yet that was actually the long-term plan, was, was to use this for, for sand and gravel, and that's what we should go forward with. Recognizing that we're not going to, we're not going to consume a hundred percent, we're going to leave a portion that they, that obviously the abutters can use for trails and so on and so forth, and I think that's fair. I think it's fair. We have, we have the people that live in the area, and then we have the rest of the town that we also have to consider relative to the money involved.
In regards to the trail, a majority, I would say ninety percent of the trail that's there isn't even going to be touched. It's the far, if I can show you on the map, it's, this is the, so this is the, this is the, when people purchased, this was a gravel pit. This is the pit. This is the corner that we're going to be excavated, and we're going to be putting a road in. And the trail that's there goes in here, goes up, down here, and then around, actually in the chiny pit. So the only portion of the trail that's going to be lost is right here, and it can be moved. It's not necessarily going to be lost, it can be moved.
So let me ask the question again, the figure that I have is nineteen thousand, six hundred fifty, that's for reclamation?
That, no, that is for the engineering, so that's...
But a lot, a lot of that is already done, so the test pits, the test pits that are involved in that were done by Randy Stevens in nineteen eighty-eight, and they're still good today because he did such a good job taking notes on them, so that takes money off. We don't need to do a boundary survey because we have every pin out there, so that takes money off. That number you're looking at's worst-case scenario.
Because we'll be, we're gotten...
And we can also do a piecemeal too, we can, we can choose who does what.
But there's also additional monies to do the actual clearing, correct?
Yes.
Digging, bringing equipment in?
Beyond this figure.
Beyond that figure.
Okay.
And then there would be ongoing costs.
Yeah, but the ongoing costs, after the initial startup, I can consume out of the existing budget that I currently am using.
How much money do you really need? That's what I'm asking.
I'm not a hundred percent sure yet, because I'm getting different numbers from different people about the clearing costs.
Can you ballpark?
I need to come ballpark.
Four thousand an acre.
It's four, about four thousand an acre.
So twelve.
Yeah, twelve.
Just start with all.
We walked it with a logger who we hoped was going to do it for nothing, and he said if this was a house lot, I'd charge you four thousand an acre.
Because there's no good timber out there.
Correct.
So we can move to accept it? I didn't even close the public hearing?
Can we have a couple of funds?
Yeah, you guys just...
No, no, that's not what I meant. Yeah, I, I'm just trying to get a procedural in here.
Yeah, the public hearing is to accept the money.
Right, so we can do that, and then we can continue the discussion about what we're going to do here. I'd like to do it that way, if this will favor the chair.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just want to get the money in first. Then we'll deal with how to get rid of it, right?
Well, how to use it, yes. All right, you two, a second. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Babies first?
Okay.
This is about accepting, right?
Yes, I know that.
But I'm having a very hard time with spending twenty thousand dollars on something that hasn't even been set yet, like, what do you have to show for it after, if it turns out that it's not going to happen? We haven't decided if it's even going to happen. I'm one of the people living very close by, and I know Mrs. Rossi says she doesn't think it's going to do anything to our property value, but are you going to be ready to set a guarantee or warranty that if, if our property value goes down, you're going to compensate us for it? I mean, I know if there was a gravel pit at the end of the driveway, when I bought the house, I would not have bought it. We're not going to live in this house for the next ten years. Am I going to be able to sell the house? I'm going to be stuck with a house that I can't live in. So I find spending this much money on something that's not really benefiting the residents, other than the employees, is not really, why are we not looking into like renewable energy, putting solar panels on all the town buildings? That's going to give us money right away instead of spending it on consultants that's not really giving us anything. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I gotta say something. One, this doesn't benefit the employees at all, it's easier if I just call and order it instead of spend my time to do all this and dig a hole, and then I got to screen it, and then I got to haul it back. If it was going to benefit me, I would just say spend it on something else, and we'll just raise the budget, increase everyone's taxes, and I'll buy it, because that's easier. Thank you.
Bill?
Bill, on thirty-eight Virchell Load, speaking as an individual, not as a member of the Conservation Commission, because we, the commission has not had an opportunity to meet and discuss this. My concern is procedural. The folks who live in the neighborhood have the understanding, and had communicated by the town, that there would be a sidewalk in the spring before activity happens there. It seems to me that we should live up to that. I think there's going to be a period of time that would be required to get permits from DES in any event, but I think just as a procedural matter, we should let voters of the town decide if this is what they want to have happen. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on the procedure. In order to go to the planning board, you have to have a plan, and the planning board will conclude a public sidewalk for all interested parties once they have a plan. We have to have a plan before we can go. I thought the Conservation Commission looked at this and discussed it already last spring and thought, and decided that there was no conservation value out there. You guys met last winter and talked about this. Because Bill, Steve and I both went to a meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hump?
We did indeed meet last year, but we were operating until a week ago, under the strong assumption that there was nothing going to be happening with respect to this proposed activity until voters acted at the March meeting.
Ms. Tappin?
In Tappin Steppingstone Road, I am a member of the Conservation Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual, and just to say that, I'm not saying whether the process should go on or not, but there's been a lot of recent research that reclaimed gravel pits make excellent wildlife habitat, often providing habitat for many more diverse species than would occur on the forest that may or may not have been there ahead of time, and I can provide some references if anyone's interested.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alexander Taylor, Newtown Plains Road. I live almost right across from Plague, Newtown Plagues, and I just found out about this recently. I would be interested to see what the concept is. I know that you're only taking a portion of the gravel pit, but I don't know how far that extends. You know, when I look out my front door, I can see a tree line and everything, and I don't see the gravel pit that's behind there, and I want to know if that would be affected. The lifespan of the gravel pit seems much longer than I expected, which is good, but I would like to see more of a concept before, oh, great.
So this house that you, Carl Weeden's house, basically it's behind their house?
Okay.
And out a little bit. The road will come in off the cul-de-sac, it'll just be a road wide enough, let's say thirty feet, worst-case scenario, to get the trucks down in there, and then it'll be this back corner here.
So it's that back corner there, so I'm behind there, so it's, okay. Okay, well, that, that, and it would, this would be the same level as the...
Yeah, so this pit level is here, and because they're approving a butter, we can go right down to the same grade.
Okay.
So it's beneficial for this open space for this development.
Okay.
Much better than, if not, it's flat, ten-foot wide, berm, flat, so because they're approving, we can take that berm out.
Okay, great. Yeah, well, it looks like a reasonable plan, I would like to see some of those details. I did, on the website, there was a sidewalk that I saw listed for the morning, Saturday morning, but I heard that that wasn't happening, and so...
Yeah, because we decided, or I was my suggestion, to do a sidewalk when we had a plan.
Absolutely.
Because other than going out there and go, "Well, we want to cut here," but, you know, it makes more sense to have an actual plan.
Yeah, that, having a plan, that sounds, sounds good. I would, I would love to see what that plan is before, I, I don't know if it makes sense or not, but I...
Right, and that's who we have to get the money for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's do this.
All of Grogge, forty-six, Longview Lane, a question for Steve. The pile of material that is at the highway lot, and I think still there, came from Old Mill Road, and that was a huge pile, and that was there for a long time. So my, my question is, when, if and when you move material from this new pit, are you moving it en masse and replenishing the pile at the highway department? And if so, how long, to the extent that the Old Mill Road stepped, okay, how long did the Old Mill Road pile last? I guess the question is, are you going in with a plan to replenish the pile on the, on the highway department site? And if so, how long would that take? As opposed to, will you be going in each year just to get the material for that winter?
So the plan now is to not replenish it, but to go in each year and take out what we need for right now, and replenish the pile that is currently there that's screened, and we do all the screening at the highway department to try to reduce noise at the site there so we didn't bother people's houses. So essentially, we'll really only be in that pit for two weeks, three weeks a year, on and off, trying to get the stuff out so we can bring it back and make all the noise over at the highway garage to clean it out.
And as part of the planning board process, they'll determine the hours, days of the week. We can even limit it to July, Tuesday through Thursday, the month of July. I mean, the planning board, and as Steve has expressed many times, willing to work with the neighbors as to, you know, days, hours, things like that, because it's not an everyday, twelve-month-a-year operation, it's just a few weeks a year, that's all.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
You're familiar with the planning board process and all this, too. What public input is allowed in those particular meetings for something like this?
Every, all public. The public, the abutting neighbors will get notified, it'll go in the paper, anybody can come, and they'll take all the public's concerns into account and then address, like, say, they, they want no trucking on Mondays. I'm sure that Steve will accommodate no trucking on Mondays, and it'll be a written decision that says, and then Steve will abide by that. And whoever, if Steve retires or whatever, it'll be in place to follow those procedures.
Thank you for clarifying. Anybody else?
Or we just split this up?
Nothing else? No? Nothing else? So I officially closed the hearing, and I move to accept the additional state municipal aid as unanticipated revenue in the amount of forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Bullock? Come back up to me. How much funds do you say we need to get going?
To get going, like with the permit part, or with the clearing of the trees part, or all of it together?
Not the reclamation, just the beginning part.
Just the beginning part? Well, that includes the reclamation, because you have to do a reclamation plan and everything else. So give me a figure.
Well, I think it was nineteen thousand...
But he needs more than that.
I need more than that, I need enough to start to get the trees cut and the stumping done, so...
Oh, so it's the twenty thousand plus the fourteen thousand?
Yeah, so thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand?
I'm thinking of moving on this now, at this point, for the good of the town, with respect to the sand that's required.
Yeah.
To get this thing going as quickly as possible. Being on the planning board, I know we take every comment into consideration to reduce noise and reduce dust and try to keep it at times when it won't. Obviously, when things are going on outside, they're important, school things and so forth. So I feel comfortable, there's enough process here where the public might have enough time to have some, some input, so he can be restrictive and neatly. So I'd like to move forward with this and use these funds at this time to get this all going.
So is there going to be a discussion with planning board, a public meeting sometime beforehand and then move out, or we can just go now?
Well, we can, I mean, there's already, you know...
Current?
Move.
This question, please.
What's happening, sorry?
No, we're just wondering about the process to get started. Will there have to be a public meeting or sometime at the planning board to offer?
So no, the planning board can't do anything until they have a plan, that's the problem. They can't do anything until they have a plan in front of them.
Okay, who does the plan?
The, whoever we hire, that's what the money is for. The planning board is aware that this is coming down the pike, we talked about this at last meeting, but until there's a plan, we can't...
So you've got, it's got to be sitting on the desk. Okay.
Yeah, because we have to see what we need to reclaim and everything. It's not, unfortunately, it's not that simple. We're under the same rules as, if Scott wanted to start doing this on a piece of property, we're not exempt from those.
What do you anticipate the turnaround time for that plan is? When would you have it? What do you think?
I don't think I'll have the plan until January, February.
Okay.
I think it's going to take some time. It takes, you know, the people are so busy now because the economy's so good, that, and we're not good customers, so to say, so we're...
We're on the list.
We're on the list, just like everybody else.
Okay.
Well, I move that we take up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the unanticipated revenue that was just accepted to put towards the development of the gravel pit.
Second? Was that a second?
I thought you said second.
No, I said, do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second.
Second discussion? I have, I have a few comments. One, I'm not against the plan, but I really like it go in front of the voters. I think they need to have their say, and I think more information needs to be put out there in terms of what this is and what it isn't. So I'm not against doing it, but I would like the voters to have their say in it, so... Any other discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. So that was kind of like three A.
Three A.
I'm a A. Item number four, Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager.
All right, so at the transfer station, we have fire sprinkler inspection at the beginning of August, and I've got two separate quotes for work. And I've got two separate quotes for work. So the biggest quote, the two thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars, is because the actual sprinkler system itself has leaks in the pipes. This has been known for a little while. And I found out about it when they came and did the inspection. So this quote is actually from like two years ago. They just finally resent it to me, so I could present it. So it's essentially the pipes that are above the ceiling just have leaks in them. They leak air out of them right now because the system's charged with air to keep the water back until it calls for a fire. And then the second one, the one for nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, is I guess every five years, the gauges on all the pumps need to be replaced according to fire standards. And then the inside of all the pipes and the sprinkler system are supposed to be inspected internally every five years, too. So when you add both of these up, if you guys want to go through with fixing them, I do not have a building maintenance budget in the transfer station, nor do I have it in the budget to pay for this stuff without severely handicapping a lot of what I need to do for the rest of the year. And then there's also another part of this. The actual cistern that's up there is supposed to be drained and inspected every five years also, which has never been done. And just as a gauge for it, I don't have a quote for that yet, because a third party has to do it, Superior Fire does not do it. But they told me a tank in Deering, that was twelve-thousand-gallon tank, ours is thirty, to drain that and inspect it was thirty-five hundred dollars for a tank less than, not even half the size of the one that we have. So I haven't gotten a quote back from them. Again, I don't know how vital this stuff is. I'm just bringing it before you guys, because I was tasked with fixing the building and getting the equipment ready to go and fixed, so this is where I'm at.
Where is this sprinkler system, where the bins are, et cetera, et cetera?
The whole entire building.
So it includes the maintenance area in the back, all of that?
Where all the bales are, includes everything in that whole building.
And it's never been drained and serviced?
No, they've been drained. So, and you think every year they come, they charge the entire system, check for leaks, drain the water out.
Okay.
They do that every year.
Okay.
And then they do a flow test on the pump, too. So the pump there passed, and they did the flow test on that this year. But they... So when they fill the thing with water, you can see where the leaks are, because water is coming out of the pipes.
Yeah.
So when they did it, we didn't fail the inspection, they just gave us deficiencies in the system. So we had deficiencies for leaky pipes, deficiencies for the air-water gauges not being replaced every five years, and then not having an internal inspection of the inside of the pipes every five years. And then they gave us one, a deficiency for not having a tank inspected. And the only reason the tank needs to be inspected is because it's part of our sprinkler system. That's where we get the sprinkler water.
Do we have any other buildings with sprinkler systems?
No, I think that's the only one.
And you mentioned NFPA?
Yes.
So, there you go. There he is, there he is, I can tell.
This is why I asked him to come tonight to answer these questions.
Chief Nemeth?
Yeah.
So the tank inspection?
Yeah.
It's per NFPA code?
Correct.
So it's never been done? It's never came to anybody's attention that it needed to be done?
No. In something like that, the codes are, there's so many codes out there that I rely on some of these companies to come in and do inspections for all the commercial buildings in town. And then it's up to the business and those businesses that do inspections to send me the reports, so I get the reports all the time.
Okay.
And he's the second one recently. The cistern fund has been in the code for a while. I did research of it back to two thousand and eight.
Yep.
And we had another company in town reach out to me, and they asked, and they were like, "We've never done this." So I don't know if somebody's been pressuring the sprinkler companies to push this a little bit more, because it is a third party that has to do it. It's not them getting the money on it. But this came to light to me, too, recently.
So you would recommend it be done, though?
Correct. Yeah, and like Steve said, it's a deficiency, so the system's going to work. We have a fire in that building, the tank's fine, it holds the water, it's going to flow correctly. There's just some leaks in it. The problem is, over time, those leaks are going to get bigger. The jockey pump that keeps the air in that system, it's going to burn out, or the holes are going to get bigger, and then it's just going to start flowing water, and then we're going to have an issue, so...
Is that cistern plastic, or what is that?
No, it's a concrete system. It's the whole foundation. So when you actually drive up to the building, that lower half, you see the foundation wall. That is the cistern. It's underneath the building. They built it into the building.
Okay. So the thirty-two-hundred, what was the other figure you said in terms of the inspection of the tank?
The twelve-thousand-gallon tank in Deering was thirty-five hundred dollars. I don't have the actual number for that yet.
So I assume you're in the process of finding how much of thirty thousand is...
Yeah, the problem is, is I don't know any companies that do it, so I'm relying on Superior Fire to get the quote for me. Because that's, I have no idea who'd even call for something like that.
So would you be amenable to authorize him to do this thirty-two-hundred-dollar work and have him come back to us with what the cost is to do the tank inspection?
Sure, absolutely. Yep. No, I have a question.
Yeah.
Depending on how much the tank inspection is, is that something that can come out of the cistern capital reserve fund? Because it's maintenance of a cistern, and I'm asking...
My understanding, and Mr. Tappin's here, so he can certainly speak to this as well. My understanding is that the cistern capital reserve fund is for maintenance and repairs. An inspection is not really a repair. Certainly, if during the inspection something is found wrong with it, I think that money can be used. But I don't know that the capital reserve fund can be used for the inspection.
I just, to me, it's maintenance, that's why I'm asking.
We can certainly ask the trustees to take this up at their next meeting.
So, well, since we're not moving on that right now, we don't have the number. How about if you query the trustees and ask them, let them know what the procedure is, and see if that capital reserve fund is applicable or not? When Mr. Bullock's in fact, we can determine where the source of it is.
This is independent.
You don't hear a heartbeat.
They're tied, but it's independent, yes. And we do have money, I guess, in the contingency fund, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, spend anything, yeah. So, anything else?
Good.
So I move to allow the Public Board's Manager to enter into contract with Superior Fire Production Incorporated for work on the transfer station sprinkler system. Said work is not to exceed thirty-two-hundred dollars and funds to come from the contingency fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Gazowski, Sustainability Committee Chair.
Paul Gazowski, 46, Life Reliant, Chair of the Sustainability Committee. I guess I'll try to do the summary, and maybe Julie can help me. At your meeting on October seventh, which I was in attendance, the board discussed the future of the Solid Waste Committee. And at that meeting, the Sustainability Committee was asked to discuss the possibility of assuming some of the duties of the Solid Waste Committee. And we had that discussion on October eighth at our regular meeting. And we discussed it, and we voted to assume those responsibilities. As I understand it, from the meeting on October seventh, Steve Bullock said that the primary request was to help with education and outreach for the public, so that the public would be able to use the transfer station more efficiently and effectively, and so that the employees would not be tasked by accident with keeping things in the right bins. Since our committee was doing a considerable amount of the education work, at any rate, in that, one of our members, Jen Messiter, has written probably thirteen articles that have been in the ecrier about education. So we have a pretty healthy backlog of that. And we've done some other things in terms of creating quizzes and such. So we've been doing some of that outreach. So when the committee discussed it, it wasn't as much of an issue. Dean Rubine, who's here tonight, is or was a member of the Solid Waste Committee. He is a member of the Sustainability Committee, and he was able to brief us and contribute meaningfully to the discussion about what we should do. So I guess the report to you is that we've discussed it. As long as our principal task is education and outreach, something that we're doing already, we're comfortable with that, if not a little bit enthused about trying to continue with that. So if Julie has something that she would like to add, that would be good. I think Dean Rubine sent her our draft minutes from the October eighth meeting. So everything that you need to know is in there in draft form. So glad to take questions.
I think that because the board created the Solid Waste Committee, the board would, not necessarily tonight, but we should probably need to take some formal action to dissolve the Solid Waste Committee. And then the Sustainability Committee might want to revise its mission statement or charge or something to just formalize what was discussed tonight.
Can I ask?
Yeah, I think that's a proper way to go. I can move tonight to sunset the Solid Waste, but we can probably do it at the same time, sunset the Solid Waste Committee, but have you look at your rules and regulations and the stuff you want to do and embed it right inside there.
I think it might actually be there already. I think our mission, our vision and mission statements are pretty robust. So, but we will be glad to take a look at that.
And how do we get members of the Solid Waste Committee over to the Sustainability Committee? Do we have to do it?
Well, there's only two left on the Solid Waste Committee. Amy Schmidt, who I don't think is here tonight, and Dean Rubine is already on the Sustainability Committee.
Oh, so he's...
Great.
So we just have to see if Amy wants to move...
So we would just have to ask Ms. Schmidt if she wants to be formally appointed to Sustainability.
I think Dean has asked her, and she's indicated an interest, so I'm not sure where it's gone beyond that.
So in reality, we could sunset the committee tonight. And we'll see what we have.
My understanding is this, I mean, the Solid Waste Committee was here for the discussion the other night about it, so I think they're aware of what's going on.
Yes. If you feel, your educational part is robust enough.
Yeah, as long as this doesn't meander onto like larger responsibility, we're quite comfortable with it. And the education component, as long as Steve's comfortable, you know, and we'll take his guidance and your guidance on all this, and Julie's guidance, so... Sounds good.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm good.
I want to make sure, he mentioned your name.
Right.
No, I'm good with it, because I've seen what Jen has wrote, and it's gone into the ecrier, and she does a really good job. And we need to get the education part of it out there, because there's... I opened, saw someone doing the soft drop the other day, and went over, and the van was full of cardboard. So there's a lot that needs to be done on that end.
Okay, thank you.
Therefore, therefore, I move to sunset the Solid Waste Committee as of tonight and ask the Sustainability to take on the educational responsibilities that was put forth under the Solid Waste Committee.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Paul.
Congratulations on your work, guys.
Well, we don't want to be vulnerable, but to talk to you...
I'm number six, me, TCVC representative. Please... Are you reading? Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, I'm speaking as a representative of the Town Center Vision Committee. I have a letter that was written by the Town Center Vision Committee, addressed to the Select Board, and I volunteered to read the letter. It's addressed to the Select Board. "We are writing to seek clarification about the result of your vote on October seventh to deny funding for an assessment of both the Town Hall and Parish House. The Town Center Vision Committee charge states that plans for the renovation of Town Hall as meeting space should continue. A plan for the building should be developed and condition assessment with cost estimate obtained for required work. You can see that our request for funds for an assessment of the Town Hall is an explicit part of our charge. For this reason alone, we believe that the Select Board erred in not approving funding for the Town Hall. Without funding, we simply cannot complete our charge. Though the Parish House is not specifically mentioned in our charge, it does call on the TCVC to quote, 'continue its work of addressing facility renovation and modernization of the Town Center Buildings.' That's why we have included the Parish House assessment in presentations to the board as early as June third, two thousand and nineteen, and as recently as September ninth, two thousand and nineteen. If the board did not want the Parish House assessed, it should have made this explicit at either of those times. It has come to our attention that the board may wish to see funds for the assessment of the Parish House come from the Heritage Commission. If this were the reason for the board's objection, it should have made this clear so that the TCVC and the Heritage Commission could act in a timely manner. However the board wishes to proceed, we want to underscore the vital importance of assessments of these buildings by qualified firms. Without assessments, neither the Town Hall nor the Parish House will be eligible for Land and Community Heritage Investment Program as LCHIP grants, which could amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars in matching funds, meaning these assessments could yield a tenfold return on investment. Moreover, without an assessment and cost estimate for renovating Town Hall, the voters have no real basis for determining what additional funds should be committed to the renovating Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund, as the actual cost of that renovation remains unknown. We also want to remind the board that the two thousand and nineteen Town Warrant addressed the Town Hall and Parish House in two distinct warrant articles, both of which were recommended by the Select Board. Article four asks the voters to establish a renovating Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund and to raise an appropriate fifty thousand dollars to be placed in that fund. That article passed with sixty-three-point-one percent of the vote. That was four hundred and seventy-seven yes, two hundred and seventy-nine no. Article sixteen asks the voters to suspend efforts to remove or demolish the Parish House. That article passed by an even larger margin with seventy-nine-point-three percent of the vote. That was five hundred and ninety-nine yes, one hundred and fifty-six no. Given this popular support for renovating Town Hall and exploring other options for the Parish House, we urge the Select Board to approve funding for a Town Hall assessment and to provide clear reasons as to why it objects to funding the Parish House assessment and what, if any, alternative plans should be pursued for assessing that structure. The letter closes most earnestly, Town Center Vision Committee, and this was approved by all of the members. They're listed here, Kurt Bonquist, Scott Bubey, Ben Jeans, Pat Jenkins, Mandy Miller, and John Tappin.
Thank you, Mr. Tappin. So I would like to, with reluctance, move to... Move to authorize the Town Center Vision to contract with either AECM or Oak Point Associates to a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand... Oops, I went over the higher ones. Fifteen, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars to provide architectural and engineering services to perform a building assessment and cost analysis on the Town Hall, to include assistance with grant application. Said funds to come from the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a second? Also, I'm going to... Any discussion?
Yes, I'm probably going to, I'm going to vote no on this, and the reasons why is that we're trying to get a municipal building put together, and what if the municipal building doesn't pass? Now we're doing all this analysis and study on the old Town Hall for a meeting space. Well, it won't be a meeting space anymore. It might be a renovated space for the Town Hall that did pass with the municipal building. So it's always been my plan before to focus on one building at a time, municipal building, and then to focus on the old Town Hall, get that renovated, and then focus on other buildings. And we've talked about Parish House that came into view recently. So I'm still stuck on that. I don't want to move away from that. I want to focus on municipal building and not dilute the efforts with the town voting process by saying, well, we're going to do this. However, we've got funds, and we're trying to build it over here. I did commit to the fact that I'd like to put $100,000 this year into the old Town Hall to stop bringing up those funds, so we'll have enough funds in the end that we'll have enough matching money that we'd have great opportunity for winning money out of L-Chip. So that's my reasoning behind it. So that's why I'll vote no.
Mr. Brown, anything we could do?
I'm all set. You know, we keep, we keep flogging the old Town Hall, and it never goes on anywhere. I mean, so it just gets older and older, and weaker and weaker, and we keep talking about it. Who knows? Maybe the next Select Board will also talk about it.
So does this mean in the end that it's being assessed for a meeting space on?
I think the assessment could do both things.
It's not saying that.
I don't, I, what we're planning to do with it is fix the floor, bring all the ADA stuff. The only thing that's really changing is part of the town clerk, tax collector's office. So we can even have them come back. Let's say, for instance, municipal building doesn't pass. So at that point, we need to determine, one, what are we doing? And you could still use that assessment, ask them to come back and say, okay, that small section is now going to be what it was before. It's not going to be like a space in terms of for storage and stuff. The main room there is not going to change really. So I think it's good either way. So I don't think, you know, it's either or. I think it could serve both purposes. And the thing is, if the municipal building doesn't pass, and you want to do an L-Chip grant for renovating, you still need this assessment done. So I think, either way, I think we need to have it done anyways.
And one other question. Why is it so costly for assessing the old Town Hall versus the new municipal building?
Well, you're assessing an old structure. You have to go in and figure out what's wrong with it, might need to be fixed, and that's what they charge. I think the information I gleaned today from the Preservation Alliance is, I think most likely it's going to be the lesser of the two. The Town Center Vision Committee still has to look at that particular thing, but I think, at least I am, based on what he told me today, that we're probably needing for the cheaper one, which is...
The cheaper one.
Well, the least expensive one. How about that one?
Least expensive one.
It's $9,000 for the Town Hall. So the other thing I found out today, I just shared with the board, speaking with Andrew Cushing from the Preservation Alliance, we've always talked about the Parish House being the one because we want seven to save. He let me know today, because the Town Hall is on the state register, he's, his group can also provide funds for the assessment for that structure as well. I did not know that. Currently, the maximum for each one of those projects is $4,500. So 9,000, we might get half of it covered. So, but I think either way, I think we need to have it done. Even if we say, okay, it's a meeting space, we can always have them come back and say, okay, it's not a meeting space, it's going to be offices, town clerks, and they can make that small change. Basically, it's just the town collector office. But I think we can have your cake and eat it too, I think.
Maybe.
But...
I have a question. Instead of continuing to spend money on studies that don't get voted in and things, wouldn't it be wiser and a benefit to save and wait to assess it for exactly what we're going to use it for? Because if you have them come back, let's say the Town Center project gets voted down, I would assume they're not going to come back for free and reassess for office fixing as opposed to meeting space. So we're just continuing to throw money out of the, just keep throwing money at this project that just keeps getting voted down.
We can find out in terms of how much it would be to change that small portion of it.
Right, but that's just more, we're just another 15,000. It's, it just keeps adding up.
It wouldn't be another 15,000, I'm pretty sure.
No, but this, if you vote this in tonight, that's another 15,000 on top of, how much, how much money have we already spent on this project and gotten nowhere?
One of the things, Karen, is to get L-Chip money, which is a 50-50 match, we have to do one of these assessments. They won't let you just come and just, I want money.
But can we do this assessment after the March vote?
You probably could, probably could, but now we don't know how much to ask for in terms of, when we present this warrant article for 100,000 or whatever, we don't have a real number in terms of how much it would take to fix that particular Town Hall. That's what this would do.
How much have we spent on studies so far, and we've gotten nothing?
You have got something because you have plans and stuff, so that's why the Town Center Vision Committee has gone in terms of that particular, you know, layouts and stuff that we've got from La Valley Brezinger, so...
But we're not using those.
Well, we're using some, then.
How much have we spent, do you know?
I don't have to talk to him. That's something that Karen, it probably does say something.
$277,000 and change since, I think, 2009.
And then includes the library?
Then includes the library, yep.
Well, I don't know what to tell you, Karen, you know...
Oh, and I know, you guys are in a tough position. I under, I get it.
I, yes.
I just, as the, as the next subject coming up, the current tax rate, the new tax rate, I mean...
Pretty good. Well, I think it's important to remember if we're going to go forward, or when we go forward to the vote for, for the TCBC project, that we have a total cost of the program in the warrant. You can't go in there and say, well, here's this building, and they're going to ask questions, but what about the Town Hall? Well, we, we haven't gotten there yet. We don't have the number yet. What about the Parish House? Well, you know, it's going to be this much. I think we need to go in there with a really clean package that you can talk to them and say, here's what the price is going to be, here's what you get for your money. And you can sell that.
I see where you're going, but the vote last time kind of tore away the Town Center philosophy, trying to repair all buildings at the same time. And let me speak. And then, but the thought was, is that we focus on one set of buildings, on the municipal building, and throw funds against the old Town Hall, knowing in the end that we're going to repair it, we can't dispose it, we have no desire to dispose of it, it's historical significance. And that way there, we would continue to put funds in that, maybe it might take a couple more years to build up those funds, and then we could still go after the L-Chip funds. I, I'd be very reluctant to go after funds to fix the old Town Hall and the new municipal building at the same time, extremely reluctant with respect to the tax structure. So that's why I'm very reticent at this time to try to focus to get one building done instead of trying to dilute the situation. But I do understand the idea of L-Chip, but there's no guarantee you're going to get L-Chip funds. It's just a, a hope that we're going to win these L-Chip funds. And I am, I am concerned, and that's why I've come to this decision not to move forward with this. So I wanted to focus on those, that one building, and not deal with anything else. If we can get that passed, then we go ahead and discuss the issues of the old Town Hall and other buildings that do exist in the Town Hall.
If I look at the charge, if I look at the charge, the current state of Town Center buildings, including code and specifically ADA issues, details of the strategy, including the site of the newly constructed building, location of all Town Center buildings, desired outcomes of the plan, consequences of not addressing the identified issues, financial details of the plan and possible funding sources. So it doesn't, you know, I don't know why we should have to turn on the back on the fact that we've got this, these two buildings that we need to deal with, and they're, they're part of the Town Center plan. It's not a municipal building plan. It's a Town Center plan and addresses all of the buildings. But why should we go forward with just the one, new one, and, and not even, not even address any of the others?
Because I'm looking forward and I'm hoping the townspeople will vote for the new municipal building. It's not a cheap price. We had struggled before.
I understand that. That's exactly why I think they're going to be very interested in knowing what's, what's the cost of all these other things. When are we going to learn that before we go voting for X dollars for a new building? I think they're going, they're going to ask, I think they're going to want to know, or else they're going to feel as though something's being withheld that they need to know.
Of course, the charge is made up by the board, so I...
Exactly.
It doesn't mean, it's not a contract.
I understand, yeah. I understand.
So I have every right to vote no.
Yeah, you do have a right to vote. I didn't say you didn't have a right to vote no. I don't remember saying that.
Mr. Gazowski.
Are you taking comments from the public?
I'm taking comments. I don't know about them, but I'm taking them.
The chairman has every right to take comments. I cannot disagree.
Paul Gazowski, 46, ninth rail lane. And I've spoken about this before. I agree with Selectman La Course that the priority here is the new Town Municipal Office Building. And that should be presented in the warrant as the priority. That's where the effort is. It's almost November, and we haven't even started a public relations campaign to get that vote. So we're, we're losing time. We're looking to funding for assessing the Town Hall. Two comments. In 2016 or 2017, an engineering firm came through and did an evaluation of all the buildings. No dollar signs attached to the repairs, but we do have an evaluation in place of the condition of the buildings and its currents. It's within five years. The second comment is that is it possible to take this request for assessing the Town Hall and make it part of the warrant to withdraw funds from the existing Capital Reserve Fund for the Town Hall to conduct that assessment after the vote and see if the voters want that assessment done? And that way, it would still keep the Town Hall front and center, the municipal office building front and center as we want it to be. We need for that to pass. And we give the voters the opportunity to, to comment or vote on, on this request. And it would also give the board the opportunity to know whether the municipal office building is up or done, and what the thrust of the assessment of the Town Hall should be. So I don't know legally if that can happen, but it's a thought.
Any other comments?
It's actually a question. It's been talked about that there may be two different uses for the Town Hall, meeting space or office space, as if those are significantly different in the structure of the building. Are, if the Town Hall becomes office space, are you thinking that it's divided up into Hard walls, doors, et cetera? Is, is that what you're envisioning?
I'm not sure what I'm envisioning. I'm not even sure we could modify the Town Hall into a useful building for town administrative functions. I don't see the expansion capability. I can't go off the back. The hub and shed is there, well, so it's near the bog, so we can't go the other side because of the building structure there. The only way to go is into the parking lot, so we're really kind of fenced in. So it is, it's, it's a struggle, just trying to find out what it really should be. So it might end up being a meeting space in the end. I just look at this logical deduction as not to move forward with this. Actually, I think Mr. Gazowski made a point, well, a well point at this time, to focus on one set of buildings and then determine to do assessment and ask the town what they want to do with this particular building.
And yet still ask them to set aside $100,000...
Yes.
...without knowing what...
Yes.
...it's going to cost.
Yes. We were putting money aside for the library every single year for a time of the $500,000.
Yes, and when they started that, they thought it was going to be $3.58 million.
I don't see, I don't see, you know, we're not talking about necessarily going ahead with any construction. I do think we need to know what's the cost, what's the cost of getting Town Hall back to a, if you would, a safe, habitable space. ADA compliant, proper security, that's, that's all. You don't have to start, you don't have to start spending that money right away. Don't ever have to spend it if you, if you so decide. But I think you at least need to go forward to the voters or, and be able to answer the question, what's it going to cost to fix Town Hall? At this, where we are in the process, as long as we've been talking about this, and we still don't know what it costs to fix Town Hall. Years and years and years, all kinds of money, and we still don't know the cost to fix Town Hall.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Because as far as the inspection... When we had Mr. Godano do work for the town, didn't he provide some figures for doing certain repairs to Town Hall or certain improvements to Town Hall?
For ADA and that stuff, yes.
Okay. And then didn't we get some of that similar information when we had La Valley Brezinger? But that information collectively isn't enough to put something together for L-Chip?
Well, with La Valley Brezinger, there was some, how can I save their reputation? They didn't do exactly what they were supposed to do. So the number they gave us for doing what they thought to Town Hall was 398,000. That put in a ramp, took out the stage, did all kinds of things that we don't think needs to be done.
Did it address the foundation and the floor?
Yes, yes, as much as their analysis could do that. So I think what we need to give, and John and Carrie, I, if I was presented with this municipal building in that deliberate session, what questions would I ask? And I would ask the same questions Mr. Brown was asking. You know, okay, this is part of the plan, what about the rest of it? And I think we need to tell them what the rest of it is. And I understand where you're coming from. And as I've said before, you know, the Town Center Vision Committee and I have been doing this for almost three years. It's getting kind of old. We spent a lot of money, as Karen said, and I'm, you know, at some point, we have to say enough's enough. And I think depending on what the vote is for the municipal building, if it's 58%, okay, I'm game for another year. If it's 30%, I've had enough. Okay, and I think the town needs to go someplace else. And I think that's what this assessment will do, will give us, okay, now to fix the Town Hall, it's going to cost this much money, we can go for a grant or whatever, but we need to move forward. If the vote is only 30% or something, I think the town's pretty much said, we don't want to spend for that, that's fine. I, I'm not going to bang my head against the wall. But I think we need to go forward and at least do something with Town Hall. And it, it needs to be addressed. And I think the townspeople recognize that. So hopefully we can, we can do that. Hopefully it passes, the municipal building passes. If it doesn't, I think we need to move forward.
Can you back out from the most recent quote from La Valley and Brezinger, the, what you don't want, like the stage? And can't you have a contractor come in and give you an estimate, like when you want to do a home remodel, the contractor comes in and give you, I mean, doesn't something like that work?
That's, that's what, these, these people are going to do that, but also it's going to give us the documents we need to do an L-Chip grant. Because I think, let's say, for instance, this building doesn't, doesn't pass, and we say, okay, we're going to try to fix Town Hall. At that point, you have the documents to go to L-Chip in May and say, okay, this is what we want to do. Here's the documents, fill in the application, and you can get into the procedure in terms of the application process. So you'll know in the fall if you've got money or not. At that point, you can...
So we have to pay, we have to pay to have this done so we can get an L-Chip grant? But we can't use La Valley and Brezinger's quotes to get an L-Chip?
No.
You have to hire a firm?
Yes. Yeah, there's certain documents that L-Chip is looking for. I had a conversation with Andrew Cushing about this today. He's from the Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and he's the one that helped us with terms of the Parish House assessment and stuff like that. So he said these two firms, that specifically, if you look at the quotes, they're referencing L-Chip documentation, that's what they're going to provide. If we try to give L-Chip La Valley Brezinger quote or anything, it's not acceptable.
What's the most amount of money we could possibly get for an L-Chip grant?
Half a million dollars. But they only do 50% in the 50% match. So let's say, for instance, fix Town Hall, if we go with La Valley Brezinger's 398,000, they'll give you up to 200,000. And that's not, like John said, you're not assured of getting it. Competition this year for historical grants from L-Chip is very competitive. According to Mr. Cushing today, in the conversation I had with him, the particular Town Hall project is very intriguing. It's 1846 building, it's something that's going to jump out to them in terms of, you know, this is something... this is something we need to be supporting.
What do you have to use the building for when it's done? Municipal offices or anything?
Hot tub room for code enforcement?
Yeah.
But yes, it has, the L-Chip grants are first things are on the state register. And it's a town hall, it is. We probably still use it for, it could be meeting house, meeting room. Could be town offices, could be any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to make a final statement at this point. Is that I don't see anything wrong about putting municipal building on the warrant and also, as Mr. Gazowski said, putting another comment saying we'd like to assess the town hall and then leave it alone. And if the amount of monies are available, we can ask for funds at that point and move forward. That way, it separates the two. We have a focus on the municipal building. My biggest, a big concern of mine is that we're going to assess how much it costs to fix the existing town hall, and this is how much it costs to do the municipal building. And if we talk on a tax rate, this is easier run than this at this point. And the opportunity is, as I said, to redo the town hall, there's just not enough space. There'll be no walls or anything. It's just going to exist the way it is with reinforced foundation and some ADA compliance, and that'd be about it. So it's kind of a risk thing in my mind, playing the risk. As we look at the tax structure, $32,000.
We'll see if we can rule that down a little bit later in the agenda. Anything else?
No.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of... Can you read that? Or should I read that? The motion? Or do we need to replay? You're all set?
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor, opposed, aye?
Aye.
The motion passes? All right. Second one. I move to authorize the Town Center Vision Committee to contract with Oakwood Associates or AECM for a cost not to exceed, what is it, $15,462 to provide architectural and engineering services to perform a building assessment and cost analysis on the parish house. To include assistance with grant applications, set funds come from the town, buildings capital reserve fund. Do I second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
As previous discussion, I feel when we talk about the town center to begin with, the parish house is never part of this town center vision to begin with. I said before, I wanted to parse this off to municipal building and the town hall and the parish house and focus on municipal building, then the town hall, then the parish house, if we looked at independently. So when I voted no, it had nothing to do with whether it would come out of one fund or come out of the Heritage Commission's funds. That's not a discussion that came into my mind. It's how I see the development of the buildings in a town with weight. So I wanted to parse this one off and have a stand on its own merits. I, this came in much later as we looked at the town center. And so I did want to look at it this time, so I will vote no at this time.
Any comments, Mr. Brown, or?
No, I understand, I understand exactly what John's saying, and certainly, you know, we inherited...
Yes.
We inherited this little darling. And we need, we need to, we need to deal with, I mean, the baby's born, so... We need to understand what we have, we have to go forward.
Any comments? Mr. Gazowski?
Paul Gazowski, forty-six, nine per lane. I've said this before relative to this subject. I think we're creating competing interests in the grant world between the parish house and the town hall. And I think we need to establish a queue and order for how we're going to go about doing this. And I think the order, from what I'm hearing, I think the order is quite clear. The municipal office building is priority number one. Town hall is priority number two. The parish house would be priority number three. To try to do them all at once is not, isn't necessary. And actually, it may inadvertently or otherwise create a climate in which the zeal of some people to write grants may end up with a competing situation between the parish house and the town hall. And from the TCVC, it would be refreshing for me and perhaps others to have the TCVC come forward and state that the municipal office building is priority number one and to begin the institute campaign to bring that forward to the voters and that the town hall is number two in that order. And the parish house, even though it needs an assessment, it can wait. And legislatively, there are ways to gain some sort of assurance and keep it active and viable. And as is the case with the library, a foundation was established to raise funds. It's very difficult sledding, but it's a 501(c)(3). I don't believe the Heritage Commission is a 501(c)(3), but I believe the Historical Society is. So, you know, there are elements of the chemistry out there. Which building is deteriorating faster than the other is, well, I guess that's a debate worth having. But I think the history of the town center and these projects clearly states that the town hall has been in the discussion for a longer period of time. And it would be a problem to see it become a third party to this, not even a second party. Thank you.
Couple pieces of information from Mr. Gazowski. One, it always has been the TCVC's approach that the town hall is on the list to be done before the parish house. So one of the things I had a conversation with Mr. Cushing today for Preservation Alliance is in terms of L-Chip grants or any other grants, you don't want to compete against yourself. So the town hall would be on, at least proposed, to be on an L-Chip application for 2020, and the parish house would come after that, so they're not competing against each other. Those tents lately have been very competitive. So I think in the TCVC's view, municipal building comes first. Town hall will come after that, after you get the people out. And then the parish house would be after that at some particular point. But I think it comes back to what Mr. Brown said earlier. If I'm looking at all this thing, I want to know what those pieces cost. And I think that's what this assessment for the parish house will do, will tell you how much it costs to renovate that thing. And it'll give you the documents for L-Chip, you know, probably 2021, '22, whatever it is we plan to do. So they're not competing against each other, they're two separate things. So let's... Oh. No?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Tappin?
The plan right now is to demolish the parish house in June.
Yes.
And last year, the voters were voted overwhelmingly in favor of postponing that to come up with a proposal of what could be done with it. We can't make any financial judgment about whether it's worth keeping or what it would cost to keep it unless we do the assessment. So the cheapest thing to do with either an unknown cost or 30, the goal we have is like $35,000, $36,000 to demolish it, is just to demolish it. So if you're going to postpone it, you need to go back and ask the voters to again postpone it for another year. And with no information about what it might cost to make it useful. So that's, that's the position we would be in at a deliberative session and the vote. Is that unless the voters vote to postpone this another year, it's got to be demolished or moved.
Does it?
Comment?
Well, I agree with Mr. Tappin's assessment that the Warren article in 2019 tasked the Heritage Commission with coming up with a plan, and that gave the building a stay, if you will. But if no plan is put forward, if nothing else is given to the voters, then I believe Mr. Tappin's correct, and we revert back to 2018 Warren article, which would have the building demolished or moved.
Sorry, I go, you need some information to present back to the voters in terms of, this is the plan for the structure, this is how much it's going to cost to fix it to, you know, be offices for the committees and commissions.
Right, and again, I'm sorry, not to belabor the point, but the Warren article tasked the Heritage Commission.
Tasked and committed commission with the plan, but necessarily they're paying for it. I think they might be amenable to bearing some of the cost. We could change it if we wanted to. Either way, the town's going to pay for it, no matter what. Even if it's got some come from the Heritage Commission or some from the town. Town's paying for it, it's all town money.
It's all taxpayer dollars.
It's coming out of one pocket or the other, so... Any other comments? Anything from the board?
I think I've said my piece.
Okay. All those in favor of the vote, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, this is supposed to be the fun agenda item, right? I was told that.
Really? Which one is that?
Which one is that?
Number seven. Julie's over town, Mr. Brown.
That one?
So quickly, I received a call from the superintendent's office last week, and I saw this reflected in this most recent, I think, October 16th school board meeting. I believe they are now planning to, when I say close the schools, they're going to call it teacher, whatever they call those days, where the kids aren't in session, but the teachers...
Workshop.
Teacher workshop or something. On the date of the presidential primary, which is currently tentatively February 11th, but the secretary of state's office has not confirmed that. You may recall, we had discussions in the last couple of years, let's just say, because we had some issues in this building with an election where it was very busy. And there were issues, there's always issues with parking. There's issues with clothes, people getting them in and out. So we had talked to the school about going back to Masway for elections. They didn't want to do that if they were going to have to do it when school was in session, and they weren't going to just close the school for us. This year, they're coming to us and saying, hey, do you have any plans to have the election for the primary at the Masway School? Because they're looking at not having school in session. As you may know, Durham uses the high school, and I think that that really is what's weighing heavily into that decision. So I had an opportunity to talk to both the tax collector, town clerk in this case, sorry, town clerk, and the supervisor of the checklist, and they would both be happy to have the election at Masway. So, provided that school is closed, they're not interested in doing it if school is open. So it is up to the select board to pick the location for elections. So I'm asking whether the select board has any interest in moving forward with this, provided that the Masway School does not have classes that day.
Would that provide them? I would say yes.
Okay.
I would say yes as well. Masway has more parking, and it is bigger.
More parking.
And it gives them more space, because they're tight.
A little tight.
Yes.
So I would definitely go with Masway.
All right, I will, I will let the school know.
Okay.
And everybody else.
Okay. And can we also announce our resignation and new appointment at the same time? Moderator?
Oh, yes, so...
Just for public?
Sure, the moderator, Jan Neal, as many of you know, moved to Michigan and recently tendered her resignation as moderator. It is the job of the supervisor of the checklist to appoint a replacement until the next election. So supervisors of the checklist have appointed Tom Quigley to be moderator, so he will serve as moderator until through the March 2020 election, at which point we'll elect another moderator.
So the position will be open on the ballot?
Well, the position was open anyway, because
Oh, it's that.
Ms. Neal's was going to have to be reelected, or her term was up after the March 20 election. Any other questions?
That's good, wouldn't it?
All right.
Oh, and don't let them charge us for using the school.
Well, that was a test case, wasn't it?
Right.
That was a test.
That was a test case.
You'll have to remind them that they're not supposed to charge us for using the school. The 2019 tax rate setting, as you saw, DRA set the preliminary tax rate at $32, with a town tax rate of $643. That did not include an overlay, and obviously, it did not include any funds taken from the unassigned fund balance to, I'm going to do this to tax rate. So if we included a $20,000 overlay, which is what we've done in the recent past, and the board takes money from the unassigned fund balance, we would need $185,000 to reduce the town tax rate to what it is now, which is $6.07. The current unassigned fund balance, you know, I had that right from...
$2,233?
No, it's $2,183,000.
Less?
Well, it's $50,000 less
Oh.
because of the recent market basket, so...
I already figured that in my calculations.
Right, so it's $2,183,000. The select board may recall that you have a fund balance policy that calls for a target of 10% of total appropriation. Total appropriation right now according to DRA is $14,557,452. Some 10% of that.
Bring it down to 649. 6.07.
This is what I think. Not counting the 50, because that's in my, but our fund balance at this moment is $2,233,000. We got $103 from VRC. And we got the 44 from the state, who we just kind of used some of that. But we have a $50,000 that we paid for the payment to market basket. And if we were to use $250,000, that would leave us a little bit more than $2 million still left in there. The other thing is, as far as we can tell, it's unaudited, but we have surplus of about $257,000 extra. So that's what's going to be dumped into the fund balance from fiscal 19. So I think I would like to use a quarter of a million just to make that whole, because basically, we overcharge people by a quarter of a million dollars last year.
So that would bring us lower than 6.07?
Yes, it would.
Yes.
Do you have a calculation?
Bring us under six, so...
It would help to me, so, no, I think it's a good move since we know how much we got last year and it wasn't spent.
The other thing we have to be conscious of, which Julie reminded me of, is the whole thing with the Fairpoint thing.
I understand that.
So that is, I think, the highest amount we're talking about is like $150,000, possibly a little bit more.
So we still have breathing space.
So we still have space.
We may not, well, we may not have to write one big check for that, but...
It could be over a period of time, but it's still a liability that's sitting out there based on the court decision.
So with a $20,000 overlay and using $250,000 from the unassigned fund balance, the town tax rate becomes $5.92.
Which will reduce that to $32,002.
Which reduces that to...
Maybe $51... $31.49?
$31.49.
I'll go with that, $250,000.
That's good.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
I think it would be nice.
It would be nice.
You're talking about a lot of cash.
No, we don't have a...
No. I actually don't think we'd make motions, we've made motions in the past.
Yes.
All right, so, just what?
It's a good idea to make a motion, because it needs to slightly agree on this one.
It's okay not to agree. The difference of opinion is good.
Absolutely.
So I move to use a quarter of a million dollars from the unassigned fund balance against the... the 2020?
Nineteen.
2019? Oh, yeah, it is nineteen. 2019 tax rate?
I'll second it.
And a twenty thousand dollar overlay?
And a twenty.
Twenty thousand dollar overlay.
Would you take that as a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly amendment.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's pretty good.
So just so everybody knows, your town tax rate just went down from last year, just so you know that.
Thank you.
I cannot speak to the school.
No, no, it's different story.
But the town tax rate just went down.
So they can't blame it on the town.
Yes, so don't go spending all in one place.
We never do. So the next item is the letter that has been requested by the Forest Society, that's requesting the letter, on behalf of Tuckaway Farm, in support of their efforts to have the Forest Society purchase a conservation easement on a thirty-six acre property. So this doesn't involve town funds, this is just, the board is being asked to send a letter in support of this conservation easement.
So that will make a nice corridor, right? Mr. Humm? From Randall Farm to Tuckaway to Powder Major?
Powder Major.
That's big.
Yes.
Ah, that's, I'm sure.
Nice support for that, for sure.
It's good, it's there, it's good.
So we need a motion, but this is just a letter, right?
That's just a letter, but that actually isn't what I was supposed to talk about.
That's okay.
You're supposed to talk about.
But that's good, because that is also being asked of the select board.
It's the Masway School thing.
Yes, it's the Masway School thing, thank you. The voters approved the Warren article in 2018 to grant an easement on a seven point not four-nine, more or less, acre parcel to the society for the protection of New Hampshire Forest, which is adjacent to the existing conservation easement property located behind Masway School. So the easement document has been reviewed by the Conservation Commission, by our attorney, by the Forest Society, so at this time, we are ready to have the board approve and execute the easement deal.
I move to approve the easement documents presented and to authorize the town administrator to execute any subsequent related documents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do you want to wait and sign that later, or?
Yeah, we'll sign that for the rest of the day. Uh, I think that's all I have.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number eight, I move to accept the consent, consent agenda as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Things for us to sign?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just somehow was doing my answer. No, the municipal.
Oh, we're talking to.
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, there's not very much. Just do it. Count town, the old town tonight. I understand, this one for TCDC. Just one on this?
Yep.
Just you. You're the honorable person.
Yeah. What, reliable or liable?
I hope we provide a little theater for you tonight.
Yeah.
Hope it was a joy to hear.
We'll be busy on Monday and Tuesday.
Which is your? Does me?
Does she? Does she remember? Oh, Jesus. Oh, my God, it's horrible.
This is just new technology.
I would care, that's right.
You're a liability. Did you look at? I don't know, might do the office, I don't know. Why you do it?
I don't know, my computer.
One, two, three, four. Table. Was that what? Two eighty, yeah. Wow, that's it for the bank? We need the manifesto.
Yeah, we did that at the beginning.
Say your, say your.
I have something that doesn't, isn't on the agenda, when do I bring that up?
Two weeks, two weeks from now. You talk to the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I bring it up now?
I don't know, I don't know if I like you tonight.
I'm sorry, well, my taxes went up eight hundred dollars. Yeah.
Yeah, but your town taxes just went down.
I don't care, still bloody out of my pocket. Anyway, last week at Plano Board Meeting, we came in, and there was a bunch of kids running around out there because they're playing soccer under the lights. I thought our fields were, and tonight they were too, I thought our fields were just during daylight hours. I don't know if that's O R Y A, I don't know who that is. It's lights. It's maximum velocity.
Yep.
And you're correct, the fields are supposed to be dawn to dusk, and he has. Get two lights out there tonight. Lights to a generator, which did not receive permission from the select board.
I thought it was eight P M. Eight P M?
No. It's dusk. And like last week, the kids are running, which is, I'm fine with, but it's dangerous, especially when the lights are only over there on the field, they're not in the parking lot, and this building isn't lit very well outside anyway. So, and tonight, there was two lights out there, not just one.
So is that a, can we have a conversation with Mr.?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Quite well made.
So remind him that it's supposed to be till dusk?
I'll double check that. But in any event, he would need permission to put lights up.
Exactly.
Little River Park is nobody out in the dark, so. If anybody's had Little River Park out in the dark.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. I moved into non-public session, I'm sure RSA ninety-one and colon three, woman number two A, do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Brown. Aye or nay? Yes?
I'm sorry, what, what do I do now?
Non-public session, are you okay with going?
I'm okay, yes.
Mr. LaCorse?
Aye.
Mr. Bubbe, yes? Motion passes. Aye, aye. All right. unfinished business, anything, gentlemen?
Sorry.
Item number eleven, this is unfinished business, anything?
No.
All set?
Yep.
I move for adjourned, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.